I just some items I want to repeat tonight. This is a non-partisan forum, so we expect that no campaign buttons or items should be brought into the hall in any kind of display. We have at a table our West District candidates, and we'll call their names here pretty soon. But again, I want to thank all of you for being here. I think testament of the fact that you are here is that you have a vested interest in what the candidates will be saying, and knowing that, in one way shape or form, it just might impact you as individuals, your families, your communities, and of course, your city. So it's important that we listen and don't interrupt, so everyone can hear, and then at the end, we do a round of applause for everyone, including the candidates. Here tonight, West District candidates, I would just read their names, and the process is still the same. The candidates will make a remark, opening statement, two minutes. We have one minute that they would use for answering questions, and then we have one minute for closing statements. Again, if you have questions, please jot them down on the card, raise your hand, there will be someone going around collecting those questions, so we can have them asked to our candidates. The more, the better. We have time, we should be out of here by 8:30, and I think we'll be able to capture a lot. We have here Chris Christopherson, Michael Fowler, Greg Jasikey...
Jasikey.
Jasikey. You used the "ye," alright. Jasikey, Susan Paugh, David Tru, as our candidates. We start with court. Chris, opening statement.
Hi, my name is Chris Christopherson. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I grew up in North Minneapolis, moved to Brooklyn Park, and 2009, I live in the College Park neighborhood. My wife is sitting in the audience today, and we got four children, all go to District Looking to run for City Council. I've sat on a couple boards, a neighborhood association. I'm also a small business owner, so I think I can bring that voice to the City Council. I've also found that, as I sit on these governing boards, I feel like I bring a different type of political vision to these boards. People ask, are you a Republican or a Democrat? I mean, it depends on the issue. You know, I'm about justice. It all depends on what we're debating, and I feel like too much, especially in government these days, people are just too ready to toe the party line, and I've found that, you know, my voice can sometimes crack through that, so that's why I'm here.
Hello, my name is Michael Fowler. I'm here to offer you guys an alternative option to the way politics have been ran, one in which people become the priority far before the policies, and the policies reflect those people. There's a serious lack of accountability when it comes to this type of profession. There's a serious diminishing moral obligation when it comes to this thing, and especially a sense of disenfranchisement, I feel like, from the political governing bodies versus the people. I'm here to try to change that and give you guys a different option.
Hello, my name is Greg Jasikey. I've lived in the city for about 28 years now. Single father of three girls, 12, 14, and 15. I've owned a business in the city for 27 years. I've been on the fire department for 25 years. My girls attend Jackson Middle School in Champlin Park, and I've spent a lot of time in the city. I work in the city, almost everything I do in the city. So I want to continue improving the city like the current council has, and make it a place that everybody wants to live, not just the north of 85th and the south of 85th and everything that we've heard from the last group, but I want to make the southern portion of the city someplace that younger people, new residents, want to come to Brooklyn Park to live. So that is, that's going to be one of my main goals, is to make Brooklyn Park attractive to everybody again, whether you're rich or whether you're a brand-new homeowner.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time out of your evening to come here tonight. I had an opportunity to meet some of you, some are new faces, some are faces that I met at the doors while I was door-knocking for the last couple of months here. You know, my name is Susan Paugh, and I am a Brooklyn Park resident for nine years. I'm a wife of 21 years and a mother of two boys and two girls. My oldest is 21, my youngest is four. I'm a community advocate. I fight for issues that I care about. I'm a small-business owner, an author, and a publisher. I'm asking for your vote for City Council in the West District because I care about the future of our city. I believe that we can build a better and more prosperous future when we all have a voice in the decision-making process. I know what it's like to not be represented because I grew up really poor. My family and I are first-generation immigrants in this country, and I saw the struggles my parents went through. I saw the struggles that they faced because they didn't have the resources, the opportunities for us to prosper, and those are the things that I still deal with every day. Those are the things I see at the doors that I knock, when I talk to my neighbors in our city. These are real issues that still face our community, and I would like to be a voice from experience, from knowledge, from lived experience, knowing that these are things that need to be improved. I'm committed to representing you and listening to your concerns, your needs, and your hopes because that's where we start. We start with those conversations, and we can build a better future together because all of us matter. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share a little bit about myself, and I hope that I can earn your vote and stand up for the issues that you care about. Thank you.
My name is David Tru, and I am a Georgian. I grew up in Georgia, and I moved up here in 1998. I chased a girl up here, and we've been married for 17 years, and we have two boys and two girls also. So a couple of years ago, my pastor really challenged me to get involved, to use my talents and use my abilities to help people, and I inherit too. And I joined the PTO board at my school with the only year that all four of my kids went to that school, and I really enjoyed it. We were on a budget, we helped, you know, dispersed our $60,000 the right way.
I think there's a phone that's going off, and we just want to make sure. Okay. I'm sure our timer is ready.
This happened to all of us.
We'll grant you the time to do that.
Okay.
Alright. Is here somebody? Yeah, you got some help by you there.
No pressure. Yeah, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Still have your time.
Okay. Okay. Well, anyway, my pastor challenged me a couple of years ago to get involved, and I did. I joined the PTO in my kid's school, and then from there, I've been in real estate for 25 years, building properties, remodeling properties, and, but taking the challenge from my pastor, I started to help, I became a counselor, a consultant, to help homeowners to remodel their project, to remodel part of their home or do just simple repairs. So I've helped out various people, you know, with no charge or anything, just helping them and getting down on their level because I've been there. I grew up, I have, I'm a family, I grew up from a family of six, single mother, and I grew up in a very impoverished state, and, you know, I still have, you know, struggles now, but I'm willing to take what I've learned and pass it on and bring them with me. And the things that I know about real estate development and everything is some of the things and the policies that's going on right now in the Brooklyn Park City Council. Right now, they want temporary housing for elders to be, it's like a small trailer unit parked on the side of the house, and so there's a bunch of policies that have to go along with that, and with my background, I can help improve that policy and make it a perfect fit for seniors that want to, you know, spend their final days with their kids. And so I'm David Tru, and, you know, I'm running for City Council.
Okay, let's start with a round of applause. Let's start with that. Yeah, you know, we want to be very engaged in here tonight. There are no cards that we have, and please pass more around. As questions come to your mind, please write them down so we can collect those cards. We'll go to questioning now, and you have one minute to answer, and I want to recognize the members from the Leaders Club here in Brooklyn Park who are our timers. They're right in front of you, and you see the sign as they raise their hands. Okay, thanks.
Is there an order? Do you have the orders?
Chris's first.
What programs will you propose for youth and immigrants?
Well, definitely take the programs as they come, specific, you know, I can't give you specifics, but whatever gives us the most opportunity to enrich everybody in Brooklyn Park, we definitely want to give everybody the same opportunity to be involved and enrich their lives.
What programs will you propose for youth and immigrants?
I guess I would have to say I'd propose the ones that were feasibly possible but that they came up with. This is a big part about what I believe in, is getting it back to you guys, getting it back to the people it are. I mean, I'm not as young as I used to be, and I was born here, so as far as youth and immigration, I mean, as far as my relatability goes to that, it's to an extent, and the best way to serve these people, if we truly are trying to help, is to go see what it is they need. How can I help you instead of me telling you how I will help you? And that's basically where I'm coming from on policy in general.
I would like to see a lot of the sporting programs. We've had dwindling sporting programs. I've been a coach for my daughters in softball. My girls play hockey. Our hockey in Brooklyn Park is almost nonexistent. We have one of the biggest and best softball programs for girls in the entire metro area. Our baseball program is one of the best in the metro area. Our soccer, we have a growing soccer program that is, probably needs some assistance, but it's getting to be where it's going to be one of the best around, and I believe we need to get our kids focused on doing something, whether it's sports or a facility like this where they can come up and spend time at the rec center here, but I would love to see the programs as far as the sports programs expanded and get the kids to know that they're even there.
There's lots of things we can do for youth programs and for our young children and for immigrants. As an immigrant myself, I saw the struggles that immigrants go through when they come to a new country. I saw my parents' struggle, and some of the things that I would love to see is services and supports, resources for job training, for educational opportunities, for citizenship because I know my mom was super proud of herself when she finally got citizenship here in the United States. She earned it, and that gives a person this pride that they belong somewhere. We came from a country that was in war, and we were, we were fighting against communism. Communism was killing off our people, so she was finding this new home, and she found a new home here in the United States, and when she became a United States citizen, she was so proud because she finally belonged somewhere. There's lots of programs for youth, that's my specialty. I mentor youth, and I am a director of Project Success, and that's something that I think that we can do for our youth. Lots of ideas. Thank you. Thank you.
I feel like Brooklyn Park is recognized very well for all the parks and trails that we have, but I want to take that to another level. I want to add kinesthetic fitness equipment. Right now, we just have slides and a few swings here and there in every park, but if we add fitness equipment that youth and adults can take part of, so then when families go to the park, the kids can see the parents and the youth and the teenagers get involved and be a proper role model of showing exercise is a lifelong thing. And so I feel like if we add that proper equipment at all the parks, that would encourage, you know, a healthy lifestyle coming up through the years. Also, at every park, I want to add two fruit trees because every time, you know, every time you play and work out, you get hungry, and in doing this, you're able to grab an apple or grab a pear or something like that, and then all the way down, all the bike trails, all the bikers and runners, they can stop and enjoy a fruit tree and the workout program also.
Okay, the next question. Do you know that you can actually vote tomorrow if you wanted to? So if you already made up your mind, opposite the post office, you can go there and you can cast your vote. And the important thing is that the more, the earlier you do it, the more opportunities we'll have for more people to come up on Election Day and do that. We'll take our next question.
What can the young adults do to help improve the community?
Our question goes to Michael.
We all about that base again? What I'd like to see with the youth is actual involvement. I go to a lot of these engagement meetings, I'm on the Human Rights Commission, I deal with like a lot of these things within the city, and I don't see the youth involved. Now, whether that's an issue of the engagement that's getting outreach to them, or whether that's just a lack of inspiration on their part to get involved, whatever the case is, that bridge needs to be built so we can get them more involved, so we can have them an active part of the community where they feel like what they say counts instead of just continually being cast to the side. I think I can help do that.
I'm all about the fitness of kids and youth and parents and having that as a healthy lifestyle. I feel like if the, if the young adults get involved and sponsor a park or so many miles of a bike trail, keep it clean, long-lored and everything, that would take the amount of manpower away from the city and increase our budget in that way where we can spend funds elsewhere. So it would be twofold. It would show them responsibilities and working somewhere and maintaining something that would give them ownership and pride of taking care of a park and a bike trail, and then it also gives, increases the revenue that we're able to use or the capital that we already have to improve elsewhere.
Take away their video games. I guess the biggest thing is probably to get them the information of what kind of options they have, you know, what they can do, whether it be jobs, help out neighbors, you know, just get out of the house, go do something, you know, same back to the sports, back to the church, whatever, whatever they need to do to get active. The more, the more active they are, they can start the, start the process of becoming an adult and work their way towards contributing to the community.
Yeah, I think anything that gets our kids engaged, gets them, gets them out of the house, makes them feel like they're valued and that their voice, you know, has meaning. Also, you know, programs that teach them life skills, you know, things that I learned when I was in high school that we just don't learn anymore, gardening, budgeting, how to balance a checkbook, you know, I mean, these things that have kind of fallen along the wayside. Also, we've got some great facilities in Brooklyn Park that are being underutilized. In the College Park neighborhood, we've got a beautiful pavilion that nobody ever uses because the system is that you have to drive to the community center, give them a $50 deposit to get the key, then go back, unlock it, use it. You know, we could have a lovely warming house there for kids to skate if it was more accessible, you know, it's just little things like that that kind of make it prohibitive.
What was that question? How to get the youth more involved in...
What can the young adults do to help improve the community?
I have lots of ideas. You know, this is right around my corner. I am the director of Project Success, which is a youth empowerment project. It's something I'm very passionate about, it's something I've been doing for a couple of years now, I'm continuing to do it now, and what it really is, is I volunteer my time to work with young adults, children, in schools and colleges, universities, nonprofits, organizations all over the Twin Cities. So I meet kids all the time. I meet college students, high school students, young children who are looking for opportunities to develop themselves, who are looking for opportunities to make a difference. It does, it's not just adults. Kids want to make a difference too, and they want to be empowered, they want to show what they know and what they learn, and they want to teach others as well. So I think having opportunities for young adults and for children to teach others, especially younger kids, what they know and to mentor them because that empowers them, that shows them, that teaches them that I can accomplish something, and it gives them pride. I think having youth programs so that they can develop on their job skills, those are things that we can do. My time is up. Thank you.
The next question is, what can the city of Brooklyn Park do?
Yes, I answered. Yeah. I appreciate that. I'll go again.
Again, the question is, what can the city of Brooklyn Park do to close the achievement gap between white and black students? We know that putting money, putting more money in the school system is not the only solution. What new solutions can the candidates offer?
Actually, we start with Michael. So what can the city of Brooklyn Park do to close the achievement gap between white and black students? We know that putting more money in the school system is not the only solution. What new solutions can the candidates offer?
I'm not sure really how to answer that question. I'm not a fan of the characterization between the black and white students. Achievement's achievement, and at the point that the education system is fractured and broken in the places that it is, I think those are the areas we need to affect instead of focusing on whether it's a racial issue or ability to learn or educate. I think maybe a little more culturally diverse training in the schools may help, life circumstances and things that's going on. I think it comes down to an understanding of the people. Again, when we continue to try to categorize people and box them into places, we miss out on what it is we're really trying to achieve, and if the truth is education in this question as it is, then that's what we should be focusing on, not just the white or the black students, and figure out what those problems are that are causing that gap between those two. That's a great question, and I think, you know, nobody's really got a hard and fast answer to that, but I think one of the answers is accountability. I think accountability on the part of the educators as well as accountability on the part of the students. I'm very involved with my children in the school, and I know that the struggles some of the teachers face, just in the difference of the student that they, that they have to teach. I've got a son that's in special ed, I've got another son that's in advanced placement classes, so I see the whole spectrum of it, and like I said, I just feel like it all kind of comes down to accountability, both on the parts of the teachers and the students.
How to close the achievement gap between the black and white, correct? One of our element, I think we have four elementary schools, one of our elementary schools doesn't have a PTO board. A PTO board help brings in additional funds to the school to help purchase another teacher, and even though you say that we can't have, you know, more money doesn't solve the issue, it does. If a PTO board, if a community gets involved and starts a PTO board and bring more people in, hire more teachers, then it will, it will improve the diversity. Also, if you, with the special education, if you, how do you say it? Use the Wilson Reading Program. That helps the special education read a lot better and, you know, improve the overall thing and help everybody that has special education improve.
Well, I will have to say that there is an achievement gap. First, it is acknowledging that we have a problem, and I see it all the time because I work with students quite often in my volunteer work, and a lot of what we talk about when I meet with students is what are their struggles, what are the issues that they face in school that's preventing them from doing the best that they can? One of the things I see most from children of color, especially children that are African-American, they often talk about the lack of seeing staff, teacher, administrators, principals that look like them, that understand their struggles, understand what's going on with them at home, and some of these is experiences. It comes with experience. You face, you know what they're struggling because you faced it, whether it's racism, whether it's a different cultural dynamic, but the first step is understanding that in having proper staff that are culturally competent and able to work with our kids. Thank you.
Okay, unfortunately, as a council member, I don't think there's a whole lot you can do in the school systems. I would, I would love to see, you know, more energy put into a facility like this. One of the biggest things is kids that aren't doing good in school usually, you know, have some type of issue at home or whatever the case may be. Let's try to keep them in a facility like this doing something, whether it be playing sports or maybe tutoring with the other kids around the facility like this, but as the school system, the council can't interject into a school itself, so we need to do what we can for the kids when they're out of school and provide them with maybe another facility like this in one of the other schools.
Shakopee is proposing to raise its minimum wage for new businesses getting subsidies to $19 an hour, and it looks like a $15 minimum wage will be on the November ballot for Minneapolis. What minimum wage requirements would you support for Brooklyn Park?
Okay, that's more of a state issue and maybe even possibly a county issue. If the city was to get involved into something like that, I live on Kentucky and the Boulevard, and my entire neighborhood is full of small businesses. I would hate to see what would happen to a lot of the mom-and-pop businesses around me if I was to interject and tell them what they were going to pay somebody. I would leave that up to the state, and I wouldn't touch that issue.
I would love to see the state and our federal government push for an increase in our minimum wage. I'm a big advocate for the increase. The reason why I say that is because I see families every day, families that struggle because parents are making just minimum wage. When we talk about minimum wage, we're not just talking about high school students at fast-food joints. When we talk about minimum wage, we're not just talking about high school students at fast food joints getting fifteen dollars an hour. I know families who have worked over twenty years, parents, and they're still making minimum wage. And they're always going to continue to make minimum wage because companies are there for a reason, they're there for profits. They're going to continue to hire people at minimum wage. And the increases in pay raises are so small that you never get out of poverty. Why should, you know, kids do better when parents do better, when families do better. It's this cycle of poverty, it's this cycle of disparities, and it starts with a higher minimum wage. It starts with livable wages. Thank you.
Personally, I would support the highest feasible possible. I wish there was a way to sugarcoat it, but it's not. You know, we keep talking about this is a state issue or a county issue, I don't believe that. At the point that we have to wait and decide for other people or other counties because they don't feel like the progression is necessary and they want to hold back, we're supposed to do the same thing? I'd like to lead the way in these things. When we talk about minimum wage and you look at like where that expects, let's talk about minimum wage. What does that mean? In one hour of your life, how much can you accomplish? Yet they want to pay you a minimum salary saying that your life is worth this much an hour, and it's the minimum. Like, companies have the ability to pay you more, but they don't. They'll pay you as like, we pay you less, but we can't. I think it's absolutely ridiculous, and when we talk about revitalizing our infrastructure and creating jobs, like, do you guys want bad jobs? Like, do we continue to want these people to have to take these minimum? When you look at minimum wage, it's the most open job there is. There's not openness for management and things like that to get worked into, so I'm supporting the highest feasible possible.
It cannot be a city-to-city issue, it has to be a statewide, this was pretty much covered in the first debate. With our economy still recovering from past years, it's not a feasible thing to do right now. I think we should put it on hold, readdress this issue a few more years when our economy is at full strength, full strength, full strength and full steam, and then we can readdress it if we should raise the minimum wage. Right now, if you raise the minimum wage, it raises more debt for the employers. And then they're not making as much profit as they, that they need to, and so they're going to raise the cost of their products. So, and then that would just hurt the low person on the totem pole again. And so right now, we need to hold off on that and push it back down a few more years and approach that subject then.
Okay, city or council, or city or county issue aside, the question was asked because you wanted to know our stance on politics. So I'll answer it like this, I don't feel like there's a one-size-fits-all, I mean, if it's fifteen, why not twenty, why not thirty? And you're right, we aren't talking about the, just the fast food workers that are just getting out of high school, but we are talking about them, and we are talking about the low-skilled workers. Being a small business owner in the restaurant industry, which I feel like has been impacted the most, I can tell you that if the minimum wage goes to fifteen dollars, it's going to change the way I hire. You know, that, that person that I would have hired with the lower skill set or zero experience, I'm probably going to look to somebody with a higher skill set, I'm probably going to consolidate some of those positions. The guy that I hired to sweep the floors that couldn't get a job anywhere else, if he's got to make fifteen bucks an hour, I'm just going to have one of my counterworkers do it, and that's just the reality. Darn, I got more to say on this, but I gotta stop.
Thank you, we'll go to a new question.
Where do you stand with Brooklyn Park's associations, and are you willing to help with issues?
Associations are a reality in our world. It's there for a reason, and I think that city council members will face issues around association. As our, our job, I think, is to hear both sides of the story, is to look at it and say, how can we come to an agreement that works for everyone? So for me, I think if issues arise to the city council by associations, then we have to take a stance and say, let's come together and talk about these issues, what, what is the issue? And how can we make that work? I think sometimes there's association fees going up, it's about roads not being taken care of. Are the associations' fees being spent on the things that are actually making property values go up? Is it being spent appropriately?
I just want to clarify, are we talking like homeowners' associations? Okay. I think so. Okay, yes. In most, in most cases, I would actually side with the homeowners' associations because a majority of my work is done in those associations, and they, they do pay for services that they don't, they don't get. So currently, they're trying to work out different, different scenarios with the city to either get credited or not have to pay for a lot of the services that they've been charged for for a long time. And I hope in not charging the associations some of those fees that they can lower their association dues. I work in a lot of those associations, and a lot of them are elderly. So if that can keep the cost down and keep the association fees down, I think, I think we should do what we can to give them back what they're not, they're not receiving and for what they're paying.
Yeah, I think as with a lot of facets of government, I think what this boils down to is fiscal responsibility and transparency. We just need to know that our dollars are being, being spent properly, and we need to be able to have the resources to get that information to make sure that what's being promised is being delivered upon, and if not, we're able to get that information. You know, nobody wants to pay for the Metrodome twenty years after it was supposed to come off of your tax rolls, but we're doing it, you know what I mean? So as, as with a lot of my political stance, it just comes back to transparency and fiscal responsibility.
Again, I think this comes down to asking these people, asking the people in these associations, what is it you need and where can we help you? Like, I personally am so tired of people in these positions telling me what they're going to do and then expecting me to figure out how to live with it. Instead of going and asking these people, what is it you want done? And then leaving it up to us to say, we'll figure out how to do that. Some of the issues that were addressed to me in specific with these associations are simple problems. Simple things that could get fixed that betters the people in the community, which thereby betters the community. And I think we continue to take a stance, as far as I'm understanding it, to sweep these issues under the rug or because it affects just this association or just this association, we tend to sweep it under the rug. It's not a big enough issue that we tackle. Like I said, I'd like to see us truly engage in the community and figure out what needs to be done to revitalize and rebuild the infrastructure we currently have before we start talking about all this extra development in other places.
Where do you stand with Brooklyn Park's associations, and are you willing to help with issues?
And this is association versus Brooklyn Park, or with Brooklyn Park and not association versus a resident. Yes, but that's homeowner versus association, or?
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I was, there's two ways you can view it. Homeowner versus association or association to the Brooklyn Park. And so in that case, association coming to Brooklyn Park, you know, and requesting back fees for streets or anything like that, that they want a partial rebate on, it would have to be a case-by-case scenario. You can't do just a blanket over every association because every association has a different set of bylaws. Every association is elected members to that association. So everyone is culturally different, every association is diversely different, and so every time association comes to Brooklyn Park asking for something or Hennepin County, it would have to be, you know, approved or disapproved on by case-by-case scenario.
Okay, thank you. Are there more questions that we have? Please shut them down, let's have it out, we still have time. We'll ask our next question here.
The question is, there are many parents in Brooklyn Park, especially immigrants and refugees, that have to work at least one and a half jobs to be at the federal poverty line. Do you see this as a social or and, and/or economic justice issue? If so, what would you do to remedy this? There are many parents in Brooklyn Park, especially immigrants and refugees, that have to work at least one and a half jobs to be at the federal poverty line. Do you see this as a social or and economic justice issue? If so, what would you do to remedy this?
I think it's a people issue. It needs to be attacked head-on. This isn't something that, we continue, like I said, this is where we look at the underlying cause of the problems, not just the problems themselves. When we talk about why do you need that many jobs just to make the poverty line, it's because these jobs aren't paying anything. Maybe it's that they don't have the training that they need to do that, like, that's how you fight these things. You start creating those opportunities, I don't care what you have, but are you willing to learn? And that's where we need to start taking stances, that's where we need to start creating opportunities, is in that training, is in that opportunity. Instead of just expecting people to come to the plate already having something, that's not what this country was built on. It's a country of immigrants, man, we came here, we came together, and at the point that I continue to watch these divisions further separate without offering a hand to help, that's the people issue, that's the problem. That's where we come together and say, what do we do collectively together? Where do we stand on that together? Personally, I don't think it's right, something has to be done.
I feel like it's a social issue only because of lack of knowledge. There is, there are a lot of programs through the state, through the county, and through a lot of nonprofits to, to help supplement income, to help to get these, these residents to learn a new career. You can, I'm currently back in school myself, I've already completed my two-year degree, I'm heading to my four-year degree. But it's like the Pell Grant and a few other grants are there to help those residents. So I think there's, there needs to be a program to help educate those to, you know, have a career change and move in the right direction.
Move here. I feel like this is about education and accountability. I feel like, you know, the programs need to be available for folks to learn how to write a resume, learn a language, learn a skill, and then the accountability's got to be on them to apply it. Definitely, you know, if, if you're working a job and a half, there has to be some sort of personal responsibility or personal accountability to learn a new skill, to better yourself, to teach how to, to communicate with employers, and if they're not getting the results, then to move on, get another job. I've got two sixteen-year-old twin boys right now that are just getting their first jobs. One of them's not getting enough hours, I said, hey, first thing you do, go to your boss. How can I get more hours? If you don't get the response, you look for another job, that's just what you do. And you keep moving it up until, you know, until, until you get to that level. You know, I, I just, I just feel like to, it doesn't help anybody to help themselves if there's always another program to, to feed it.
Growing, growing up in poverty myself, I saw my parents struggle, and it wasn't because they didn't want to work hard. It wasn't. In fact, they worked, like what we said, one and a half job. They worked every day, but they always got the minimum wage because that was what companies would pay them. And as soon as they wanted more, they would lay them off. They'd have to find another job with a minimum wage. And I'll just tell you, it's a cycle of poverty. My parents worked so much, they couldn't get job training because they didn't have time. They were working all the time. They couldn't help us with our education, with our homework, because they didn't have time. They weren't home, they were working to put a roof over our head. So it's either helping their kids, job training, or education, or live on the streets. It's not a choice, it isn't. The first thing is food on the table and shelter, and that's what my parents chose. And, you know, it's a, it's a sad cycle of poverty because when families can't help their children, their children end up in poverty just like them. Thank you.
Again, I think this issue is probably beyond the resources and ability of the city council. This is probably a county and state issue to help these people out. At the, at the city council level, I would sure hope we have information that we can pass to these people and at least provide them the resources and the right place to go. That's, that's about the city council's level, like, we don't have the resources to, to help these people or to fund them or anything like that.
Do you support Black Lives Matter?
Me, correct? Okay, I absolutely do. Black lives do matter. And when we say all lives matter, what we say is that we don't see their struggle. And that's a shame, because I know people, when I tell my story, they go, they don't believe me. I'm like, you, you refuse to believe what I lived through. That's sad. That, black lives do matter. Racial profiling does happen. And we need to first acknowledge it is a problem, because if we don't acknowledge it's a problem, how do we solve it? How do we come together as a community and say, how do we make this better? And you know what? The city council does have power. The city council can make changes. And it starts with standing up and saying, I want to see something change in this city, and I will collaborate with groups, nonprofits, with organizations to make this change. I may not be able to provide this direct service, but I will work with other people to make sure that happens for our city. And that's what I, that's what I expect of the city council.
Hot topic. Everybody has a right to protest, protest, but, you know, the people, the bystanders that get hurt, do they have a right to be hurt? No, they don't. You know, there is, there is a way to protest. The way that Black Lives Matter is doing it, you know, is causing chaos, fear among the public. There was a petition over a hundred thousand people signed that's on President Obama's desk that's, you know, considering Black Lives Matter as a terrorist group. Because what a terrorist group is, is influencing, influencing people's political vote by the use of fear and terror, and that is what Black Lives Matter is doing.
Yeah, okay, so terrorists. Wow, okay, let's talk about, you know, I don't want to, give me a moment here. I mean, what is a terrorist? And we're going to bring up that, what is a terrorist? Because I can tell you, there's a group of people out here who are fearing these people wearing blue suits and badges, holding guns, just as much as some people are fearing these radical Muslims. So when we talk about terrorism and who's a terrorist, let's first define what that is. Now, when we talk about Black Lives Matter, you know, I'm not going to play part to this continued racial divide that is being perpetrated. We continue to divide ourselves amongst these thoughts. That's not what we need. We don't need to decide one group is better than another, I'm against injustice, and that's what's happening, people. When we take these type of issues, the way we come together is to take away the race and start attacking the underlying injustice which is currently happening, currently dividing us, currently allowing these type of statements to be made. us, currently allowing these type of statements to be made. I'm done.
I guess I'm a little ignorant to exactly what they stand for, but Black Lives Matter, to me, unfortunately, I've been to scenes where anything from a two-month-old to a hundred-year-old person has perished of all races and ethnicities. So to me, all I can say is all lives matter. I don't know what Black Lives Matter is all about, and I haven't, haven't watched them or followed them or, so to me, unfortunately, I've seen death of all kinds, and all lives matter to me.
I absolutely agree with Black Lives Matter as a movement. There are definitely a few of the actions that have been taken by this movement that I, that I can't condone, just in the name of justice. When your movement puts in danger innocent people, it's really tough to support that action. But I'm going to go back to accountability, and I'm going to go back to justice. I feel like when you, you're looking at Black Lives Matter versus Blue Lives Matter, there's just such divide, there's no middle ground, there's no conversation that can happen there. And I feel like we need to go back to accountability on both the police force as well as the citizens that they serve. And I feel like a huge step to that is going to be body cams. Where's the missing footage? Nobody can make, nobody can make an informed decision on this, and it's only going to keep fueling it if half of the tape is missing. We need to get rid of that. There needs to be consequences for a dash cam that didn't work. There needs to be consequences for a body cam that was malfunctioning. We need to stop accepting these excuses and get to the root of the accountability.
Brooklyn Park is one of the most diverse communities. How do we ensure that the diverse communities are engaged and inclusive? Would you like me to repeat that? Okay. Brooklyn Park is one of the most diverse communities. How do we ensure that diverse communities are engaged and inclusive?
I believe a lot of the social programs and having, Brooklyn Park has thirty-three neighborhoods. And if we organize, and, I mean, there's, there is already a lot of neighborhood watch in a lot of neighborhood communities. If we organize them into a fashion where there's bringing a lot more communication with the city, that would be one of the key ways to help out.
I wish there was a way to sugarcoat this. We need to break down the current segregation. I mean, that's just the truth of it. We sit here and we talk about how diverse of a community we are, but at the point you walk through it and you see it, it's a segregated community. There isn't a whole lot of togetherness, there isn't a whole lot of, there's people on sides and people taking strong stances. Instead of just looking at the fact that we are people. There needs to be an embracing aspect that comes to this, where we truly own the people in this community. It's not just a sense of, oh, they live here, so we're going to claim them. Like, no, let's make it all-inclusive, let's make it a part. And this starts again with the engagement process. Like I said, I've been to these meetings, I've seen what it looks like there. It's the same group of people. And how hard is it to go out and knock on doors? I've heard, I actually heard at one meeting when they asked, how come we don't have a more diverse group of people at these community engagement meetings? The response was, I don't know, I guess we'll just have to figure out how to market it to them. My time's up.
I guess that's kind of a tough question for me because my neighborhood looks like the crowd. We all go to National Night Out, we all help each other out. When our trees fall down, we all help each other out babysitting kids. We're just a community, we're a neighborhood, and I guess if that's what it takes is to get everybody to a National Night Out and get all the communities involved with each other, I mean, sure, we've got neighbors that are too busy or some of the, some of the elderly people in our street don't, don't go to things anymore, but we're just a neighborhood. We all do everything together, we help each other, we go to National Night Out, have a good time, and, and we don't see the diversity that exists in some of the other parts of town. So maybe it's an information thing that, again, they need, they need to know about the National Nights Out, they need to know about the rec centers or places they could get together, the parks with the pavilions, whatever it takes to get them, get everybody together.
I think the best way to encourage and, and continue the diversity is just education, you know, making everybody feel comfortable with everybody, whether it's language studies or cultural studies or, you know, programs that folks can, can feel like they're more a part of a community. I live in Brooklyn Park, I shop in Brooklyn Park, I see, you know, these folks that you can tell that they recently moved here, and they just, you can almost see them flounder in public, you know, they don't feel comfortable. Other folks that may have lived here a lot longer don't feel comfortable interacting with them, and I think until we can, can break down those barriers, I think that's, that's key to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to answer.
It's all right. Could you repeat the question for me?
Brooklyn Park is one of the most diverse communities. How do we ensure that diverse communities are engaged and inclusive?
Brooklyn Park is very diverse. It is our strength in, in our city. It's what makes this city home to me, and it's why I choose to live here. Because I love going outside of my home, whether it's to the store or to the library, and see all the beautiful, vibrant, diverse faces, hear different languages spoken. I like learning about other cultures, I like learning about other people. And that starts with talking to my neighbors, talks to the people that live here in the city. You know, I think that, like, for myself as a person of color, as an immigrant here in this country, oftentimes, whether or not I will engage in my community or go out to events, is whether or not I feel like I belong, is whether or not I feel like they're going to welcome me, whether I'm going to feel like that I fit in. And I think for us to be able to engage diversity, our diverse communities and people with different races and different cultures, is really to find out what it is that, what background they come from, how do they engage, how would they like to engage, and start with that conversation.
The question is, what are some programs you would recommend funding to improve growth and development to make Brooklyn Park a city where people would want to live?
Well, the short answer is, is definitely encourage businesses to move to Brooklyn Park. Be the obvious choice to get new vibrant businesses to move here that can, you know, give us things to do and can give us jobs. Beyond that, you know, you got to just take it on a case-by-case basis. The only thing that I can promise is if I'm elected to city council, I'm going to take a look at every single program and just make sure that it does, it's a benefit to everyone, the entire diverse culture, that it makes sense financially, so that we can remain fiscally responsible with your tax dollars, and, you know, just make sure that it's going to benefit. And not just a year from now or five years from now, I think we really got to start looking at the fifty, the hundred-year plan. You know, how, how are we going to address these issues, put programs in place that are going to continue to be relevant for generations?
I would agree with a lot of that. It would be a case-by-case basis, and I would like to see anything new that doesn't differentiate people and color and everything else. I would like to see programs that are for everybody, for all kids, for all adults, for all elderly, and take care of everybody with one program versus creating a bunch of different programs that are specifically for a group or a neighborhood or whatever. So that would be my stance, is to look at each case that comes before and take it on a case-by-case basis and see if it will contribute to the entire city.
That was a really long question, so I'm going to ask you guys to repeat it, make sure I understand.
What are some programs you would recommend funding to improve growth and development to make Brooklyn Park a city where people would love to live?
Okay. Well, I think that if we're talking about a city that people would love to live in, I think one is some of the restaurants, development here, encouraging restaurants, shaping up our strip malls. I would love to be able to shop here. I have to go to Maple Grove or Roosevelt to shop, and I don't want to do that. I have to go to Maple Grove to eat at restaurants that are not available here. I mean, I eat here too, but there's certain restaurants I like, like Olive Garden, and we don't have one. So I think that having, you know, a lot of amenities here in our city is what's going to make people want to live here, is what's going to make people want, love this city even more. Economic development, I think that, you know, revitalizing south of Eighty-Fifth. I know people don't like that divide, but the truth is, there is a divide. Because I live south of Eighty-Fifth, and there's not much there. You know, I go to the shops there, I eat there, I enjoy the community there, but I would love for us to have what they have at north of Six Ten. Thank you.
For growth and development, there's three main things that we really need to conquer and really push forward. First of all, I've already, you know, spoke about the parks and trails. Improving that and making us elite in the metro with our parks and trails will just further our, of residents, outside residents wants to move in. If we improve our education, elementary education, and let be the, let us be the envy of the metro with our elementary education, that would be a great part. And then Brooklyn Park needs some sort of attraction. You know, Como Zoo brings a lot of people from outside into their city, and they make money off of that. And we need attraction to bring outside money into Brooklyn Park instead of just recycling it. Recycled money is great, it's our own, it's our own residents spending money here, but if we had outside people bringing money in, that would improve our city capital by the tax revenue.
I just want to double-check. That question was, what do we want to make people live here, right? Okay. Not to take anything away from any of the other answers here, but I personally never met anybody who decided that they were going to live in a city because they had a Benihana's or because they had a water park or something. It comes down to, you live in a community because of the community. I'd like to see programs open up and fund for individuals and communities to help clean it up, re-strengthen it. Like in our, in the West District here in my community, there's plenty of you guys, you guys live there, you see it, there's plenty of areas that could use help getting cleaned up, being better maintained. Some of these homes, they're old, they're falling apart. Individuals don't have the finances to keep these up, and when they move out, then what? Somebody comes in and buys a home that now they got to go broke trying to fix? Let's make it a place that's sustainable. Let's make it a place where we've got happy people in these communities. Who doesn't want to live around happy neighbors? Who doesn't want to live around people that have, take care of their things, that respect their things? And it starts from with that. If you're proud of your community, you're proud of your neighborhood that you live in, people see that, and that's what causes them to move here.
Okay, we've exhausted the questions from the audience, so we'll go straight into closing statements. Again, one minute per candidate, and we will start from Susan.
In closing, I want to thank all of you for your time tonight, and I want to thank the organizers of this event for putting this together. I hope that you've learned a little bit about me and why I care about this city and why I'm running for city council. I look forward to also getting a chance to get to know you and to hear what is important to you. I would love to hear what you want to see for the future of our city and have that conversation. I'd love to hear what your needs are, what your concerns are, what are the issues that are important to you and how we can improve that. So thank you so much for your time tonight, and I want you to feel welcome to contact me anytime with anything that you want to discuss. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming. If elected to council, my, my number-one priority would be tax reduction in the city. Reduce taxes, reduces rent, reduces the cost of housing, it makes it a cheaper place to live, which makes it a better place to live. I would also love to see a lot more business growth in the city. We've got one of the major freeways coming through our city right now, that's going to be finished in the next couple of years, and we need to find some major companies to be building along Six Ten. So that would also assist with cheaper taxes for homeowners. If we can, if we can build up bigger business in the city, that will reduce homeowners' taxes. We need to keep the city growing in the right direction, reduce crime, keep the crime at a low rate so we're not on the news, so people don't say, oh, Brooklyn Park. I mean, that's, I've heard that for twenty-eight years. Oh, you live in Brooklyn Park? Yep. Thank you.
I don't want to put my foot in my mouth again. I feel like there are several things I want to accomplish. I have a lot of that, you know, on, on my website, you know, to view the agenda. But I want to appreciate the time to come in out for the invitation to come and speak and, and answer all the questions. Not trying to personally offend anybody here tonight, you know, we're a diverse crowd, we've got different opinions. Please look at the website. I'm here to help Maple, I mean, Brooklyn Park grow and through the other enrichment things that we have.
Like I said in the beginning, I'm here to provide you all with an alternative option on how we do things, on the fundamental beliefs that sustain those ideas. Nothing more. I'm not asking you to vote for me for any other reason, but because you feel what it is I'm saying. It resonates within you. It inspires hope and belief that things can be different. I'm just asking for the opportunity. If you feel that, then support that belief within you. In the end, I want you guys to do what's right. But I wish that we could all remember that just because it's legal or there's a policy behind it, doesn't make it right. It's time we remember that, it's time we start coming together and looking out for each other. That's all I'm here to try to provide you guys with. Thank you.
Let's get a round of applause for the candidates. Oh, great, 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 great. The last man standing, but not the least, right? Go ahead.
That just means I get the mic drop, right? So thanks, everybody, for coming out. This was a great turnout. This was a really great opportunity. I was wondering how many people were going to show up. You know, hopefully, what you can take away from my participation in this is that, you know, I'm, I'm pretty straight-up, I'm not a lot of BS, you know, I, I say what's on my mind, I'm honest to a fault. Sometimes that gets me in trouble, but I'd rather have you love me for who I am than hate me for who I'm not. And all I can say is, if I get your, your vote for city council, you know, I don't play partisan politics. For me, it's all about liberty and justice for all. Is this program, is this proposal, does this benefit everybody? Does it benefit the community as a whole? That's all I care about. I love the diversity, but at the end of the day, we're all Americans, we're all Brooklyn Park residents, we're all going to live here, we want to live here, we want our families to live here, we want our kids to live here, and how are we going to make that happen? So, thanks again for coming out.
Thank you for being here, for participating, and for honoring the invitation to at least engage the citizens of Brooklyn Park. I want to thank the audience also, it's very important because it's okay to have passion for the issues that concern you, your aspiration, and for the people who will make decisions on your behalf. So we're looking forward to have you go out, tell others, make sure you can vote, there's a primary coming up on August nine, take advantage of that. With that, I want to thank the organizers for, for having this forum tonight, our panelists for asking questions, and we'll look forward to another forum. Good night. Thank you. 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 Thank you.